I called City of Midland, City Council of Oregon. I just wanted to start with prayer. I don't know if you've all known, but the City of Midland lost an officer last night. It's still fairly fluid. Fully timed for him. I did talk to Mayor Morales this morning. You could tell he was upset. And just if you would, whatever church you go to, I've already talked to Crossroads, talked to First Ave, and just have them pray for the City of Midland. For Midland PD, and especially for the family. It's a sad situation for everybody here. I did offer him our full support because the City of Midland helped us out when we lost our officer. So if you will bow your heads, I will go ahead and open up a prayer. Father, we thank you for the stay. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together. Father, we just lift up the City of Midland. We lift up Midland Police Department, and we especially lift up the family of the lost officer. Father, it's going to be a tough few weeks for them. We just pray that you be with them. Protect them, Father. Protect all our first responders. Father, we just ask for your wisdom as we study housing and all of the desperate needs that are out there for housing. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Alvin, Floro?
I saw a forum walking in.
Did my forum walk in?
Where's Melon?
Yes, I was. Very good, thank you. Ms. Renee?
All right. Welcome, everyone. I just want to kind of walk you through how we got to this point. Back in June, Betsy and I were talking on the phone, and many of you were involved in different conversations taking place in different organizations and businesses about the lack of housing and how that was really causing a problem with workforce and really the root of all of our problems here in the community. So we had a stakeholders meeting, and that's what we called it. Many of you participated in that. That was the end of June. That was about 80 different community members who had some type of interest in housing. It was a very last-minute, put-together thing, but we had a great attendance. And out of that, that following month in July, a development corporation agreed and voted to go ahead and do a housing study. They put out an R and P with the city. We had three different companies come forward in showing interest in wanting to take part in that. CBS is the company who received that bid. And so the process started. We then had an organizational call the end of September. Seems like it was many, many, a long while back, with the City of Odessa and several groups just talking about, you know, what all CBS would need. They came out here in October, the end of October, spent three days here visiting with about 50 different people: bankers, developers, city staff, members of the real estate group, a lot of one-on-ones, as well as group discussions. And they were booked for two and a half solid days. And they also came back out in December, and they really wanted to be on their own at that time. They went to apartment complexes, they spoke with builders, they wanted to, you know, take a look at the information that they had and see it for themselves. So then that brought us to December. We did a survey, and many of you might have participated in that. We sent that to about 100 different companies, nonprofits, individuals, and I believe we had about 1,700 responses. We were hoping to get at least 600. We were very pleased with the 1,700 response. And any of you who have done surveys knows that that's difficult to get back sometimes. So then they submitted a report in February, and here we are today. So it is a large document. We do have the summary printed. If you do not have a copy, we can email that to you. I know it's been sent out to several different groups. It's a long document, so I hope that if you didn't get a copy today, we'll make sure that you get that. But we are happy to have CBS with us today. We've spent many hours on the phone and in person visiting about our problem. And I think the two gentlemen would agree with me that they go to cities all the time, and if you've read any newspaper, housing is a problem across the nation. They do agree that we probably face some unique situations, so it makes it a little bit difficult for us. But I would like to introduce Steve Spilett and Michael Pratt. I'll let them tell you all of their wonderful degrees and certifications and their expertise. We've had the pleasure of working with them for the last two or three months, and I hope that you find the information valuable. I know some of it is just, you know, we know a lot of the information in the document, but I think you'll be amazed at the information that they really drilled down into. And hopefully, when we get out of here, we're going to have some short-term and long-term goals that at least allow us to move forward in the next couple of weeks. And I know Betsy will talk about that, our next steps, in just a bit. So thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your work on Odessa. Please know this may be your last visit with us here, but we're always trying to recruit new Odessans. So if you're interested, we will find you a place to live. In fact, I think I've already offered that I have a couple of extra rooms that you can rent out. So thank you, gentlemen, for being here.
Thanks, Renee. Yeah, she's made a really strong case, so we'll have to definitely be thinking about it. So I'm Steve Spilett. I'm president of CBS Community Development Strategies out of Houston. And this is Mike Pratt, our senior market analyst. And so we did the vast majority of work on this study, and we are really pleased to be here to be able to discuss our results with you. CBS is a small consulting firm. We just have five full-time people. Our main line of business is doing market studies for various kinds of real estate development and land use planning and strategy projects. We basically look at the economy and the demographics of an area and the real estate markets in an area to help private developers or public and civic entities come up with ideas about the best ways to use land or a piece of property and whether or not to embark on projects or not. So that's mainly what we do. And in the last several years, we have kind of stumbled upon a great need in many communities around Texas and Oklahoma, which is where we do the vast majority of our work, for what we would call community-level housing studies or housing assessments. And every community has its own issues and needs regarding housing. So we see commonalities, but then every place also having its own individual issues. So when ODC and the Chamber contacted us, you know, it was made clear that this study is primarily meant to be an assessment of housing to meet the needs of the Odessa workforce. So know that we're being specific as much as possible to Odessa and in particular the employers in Odessa. And we are studying the housing needs of the folks that work at those employers. So this study, basically, we wanted to really give not only a general idea of what is going on in your housing market, but furthermore, and we are specifically asked to do this, recommend strategies and implementation recommendations that the community could act upon, that you can have to resolve and mitigate some of the issues that are faced, that you're facing, that we heard a lot of stories about. It really, really opened our eyes to what it's like to live in this sort of extreme housing market. So just want to let you know, as far as the way we went about doing our work, we undertook both what would be called both primary and secondary research, or getting sources from both primary and secondary sources. Secondary sources means data that's already compiled by someone else or some agency that we're able to use and that we deem as reliable and credible enough to use to help understand the market. The most, an obvious example of that is the U.S. Census Bureau. So we collect demographic data. We're using that. We're also, there's private demographic services that are based on, base their estimates on census data and so on. So that's, from the demographic side, that's, that's one source. There's employment and wages. That data comes heavily from the state and the Texas Workforce Commission and the Bureau of Labor, Federal Bureau of Labor Statistics. That was critical for us because understanding what's going on in your job market, because especially in a market like Odessa, your housing demand is so directly tied to the employment market. And so understanding that in terms of number of jobs, type of jobs, wage levels of those who are working here was absolutely critical. And the survey helped, I'll mention the survey again in a second, but that also got to that. Housing data, so that we have some sources for obtaining housing data that are sort of private subscription services, and that helps some. We also depended upon the apartment survey, for example, that, I guess it's the Chamber that compiles that. And so that was extremely valuable for us. And then getting help from the local Association of Realtors, that was absolutely critical for getting the data on home sales. So those are a variety of secondary sources that we use. We also did talk to your regional oil and gas industry, and they also provided some good insight into the nature of the employment market, the outlook for that, that they've been studying themselves and trying to determine their own projections for. Now, on the primary research side, that means research that Mike and I did either here in Odessa while we were visiting, or via phone or email or what have you. Well, we're going out directly to whatever it is we're trying to research and getting data, compiling it ourselves. So that was a key element of our research visits. Renee mentioned, we went out to like a whole bunch of multifamily apartment properties and talked to the leasing managers. We met with landlords that worked with, that managed private, like, single-family homes for rent for their owners. And so got insight into that critical element of the local rental market as well. We talked to housing developers, single-family developers, visited, you know, a couple of the new subdivisions that are in the area. So that's data that we went out and got ourselves. And then the survey, as Renee mentioned, 1,700 responses. We were just thrilled with that. You know, survey is really something to supplement, but also provide some, you know, on occasion critical insights into the nature of housing here and what the workers, because this is a survey that went out to workers in Odessa, the kind of housing needs they have, their preferences, and the challenges that they have faced. So I'm going to hand the next few slides off to Mike to talk about, as far as the analysis of your market. So, you know, we tried to develop a picture of the housing market in general in terms of what's happening with development, availability of housing, prices, and so on for the rental and the for-sale market. And Mike's going to discuss those and our findings there for the next few slides.
Hi. So the slide here we're looking at shows average lease price for multifamily apartments in Odessa. The red line is the average lease rate for all units, and then the different colored lines are correlate to room size. One kind of unique thing about the multifamily landscape, the market, apartment market here in Odessa, is that in most other markets, you see a clear distinction between rental prices of Class A, Class B, and Class C apartments. You don't really see that price difference here like you see in other metros and in other cities. So what you guys get for B and C-class apartment rentals, which in most other cities would be the main provider of affordable market-rate housing for local workers, is basically non-existent here because they follow the trends of the labor market, which is heavily oil and gas. So this is shown perfectly here on the graph in 2016, when employment in oil and gas industry had dipped, so did the prices of multifamily. And as soon as, you know, quip is six to eight months, when hiring begins to ramp up, we can see this sharp increase in multifamily rents in Odessa. The reason that this is very important is that the rental market overall, and this is, comes from the data that we gathered, and also the interviews of landlords and property managers, a lot of the multifamily properties are owned by folks that are out of state, and they're just calling in every day to check what is the price. If the price at another apartment is a little bit higher, then they're going to boost theirs up to match that other property. Well, all those properties are dependent on, and what they're chasing is the income of oil and gas workers. So that hurts local workers that are not employed in the oil and gas sector. And so what you have is also single-family rental prices, they follow the apartment market. So the apartment market follows the oil and gas incomes, which not everyone makes, and then the rest of the rental market follows along with the apartments. So the same, again, we have older existing single-family homes that are in the rental market. This is, again, a place where typically in other cities, you could get pretty affordable rent, and, you know, when hiring ramps up and you need a bunch of workers really quick, this is the main provider of affordable market-rate housing, your single-family and your apartment rentals. And again, this graph is just showing that, you know, the average price for all units is, let's say, 1,300 right now. And by all accounts of everyone that we talked to, apartment rents in Odessa are higher than they've ever been. So right now, we're in the highest apartment lease rate ever in the history of Odessa.
I'll just say that when we first started getting the rent data, we were pretty shocked because we were at properties that were 30 to 40 years old, and they were charging rents that a fancy new apartment complex in Houston, in urban Houston, would be charging. So it took a while for that to sink in about how extreme that was. And just shows that the outside, even if the oil and gas workers at any one property might be a minority of the total tenants, they have an outsized impact on what the asking rent at that property is.
And looking back in 2008 to 2018, this is for all units, an increase in price of 107 percent. So that's, that's pretty dramatic. And then that sharp increase from '16 to '18, too, is a lot for non-oil and gas workers to handle.
And so this is, and we'll say, even though all aspects of your market are stressed, it's your rental housing market where the greatest crisis is, in our opinion. That is the heart of, worst of your problem.
So part of it is the supply of new multifamily units. That's hard to do. It's hard to create affordable market-rate apartments in America today. It's not really done a lot that, there's not really a lot of those projects that are completed without subsidy or some type of assistance from philanthropy or a foundation or a city, state, federal government, or some type of assistance like that. So, but that being said, most, any new apartment complexes that do get built are almost exclusively always going to be Class A unless it is a income-restricted or subsidized complex. So since 2010, it's estimated that in Odessa, we've gained about 17,000 new residents, but we've, it's been estimated that we've only added about 2,500 new apartment units. And we know that the most recent, the 87th Street, is become restricted. But the vast majority of the rest of that are all market-rate, and again, all, you know, almost exclusively Class A, which we're talking, you know, 1,300 and more.
It ties to 2,000 more per month.
One of the new luxury apartments that we visited is asking 2,700. And this is for non-oil and gas folks. They have a whole nother set of pricing for folks that do work in oil and gas. So, you know, in some of those units, we see it getting up to, we were quoted, 3,000 and even, even higher for a three-bedroom apartment. And again, this table, we're just trying to break down the kind of, the market here in Odessa. So we've got the vast majority, again, our market rate and 1,300 rent, while we do have some subsidized and income-restricted. The general takeaway is that we just need more rental property. We need more of both. We need more market rate and more that are for folks that are on lower income.
Because, you know, even as your oil and gas employment has increased, as your population increases, and we haven't really documented sort of the jobs by industry data here in this presentation, but know that, you know, all the other kinds of jobs that are here because you have population, that's everything from education to healthcare to retail accommodations, all those kinds of service jobs, those go up, too, and they pay a lot less.
So again, just to finish up the rental housing market findings, this is based on 2017 ACS one-year data. From that data, we see a total demand, and this, again, is a 2017 number, so we've got about 6,000 affordable rental units for the income ranges and the prices that are shown in the table. Again, this is 2017 data, so the demand due to population and job growth in Odessa is likely, you know, several thousand units more than this. So we've got, at the very least, a very, very conservative estimate of, at the very least, 6,000 rental units that are needed, that are, that are affordable to income ranges of non-oil and gas workers in local businesses here in Odessa.
Anytime, I mean, you get above, yes, under $20,000 annual income, yeah, a lot of those folks are probably, you know, not working that much, and they may have a part-time job, and they may have public assistance and so on. But once you get into above $20,000, these are folks who quite likely have full-time jobs.
So moving into the for-sale market, obviously, the percentage of homes sold priced 200,000 and below has significantly decreased since 2011. We see here that we've gone from 80 percent of homes sold to just under 50, about 45 percent of homes sold last year were 200,000 and below. So we're used to here in a market that doesn't have single-family property values increasing at such a dramatic rate just throughout history, and then all of a sudden, just in the last two years, obviously in the last seven, just a sharp, sharp decrease in the supply of for-sale homes priced 200 and below.
Y'all have probably seen the media releases that come out about how Odessa and Midland are like the top, you know, most rapidly growing or appreciating markets in the country and so on, so, you know, pretty widely known.
And the incomes of folks that are, you know, most heavily cost-burdened and the folks that are being squeezed the most are, you know, folks that make between $40,000 and $60,000 annually. And again, we're talking about folks that are probably, you know, mostly college-educated, you know, have a professional, you know, occupation, and yet they're, they're having trouble owning a home because there's really not a lot available in that range here in Odessa for folks that are making between $40,000 and $60,000 a year. So in terms of how much of a home price that would translate to, we're talking $150,000 to $225,000 for the price of a new home.
And when you find cost-burdened houses.
So a cost-burden household is any household that is determined to pay 30 percent of their household income or more strictly on housing costs.
Gross income.
Gross income, yes. And for a place like Odessa, it's important to also understand, just like you guys all do, because you live here, the price of gas, the price of groceries, just, you know, the daily cost of living is above average here for Odessans. So that isn't shown in this data. There's really no way to account for that. But just understand that, again, these are very conservative estimates because we can't account for too much. More people are paying for groceries and gas and things like that, and also factoring in, you know, transportation costs and, you know, sitness, or if your car gets, you know, needs maintenance and things like that.
And just note the column heading on the last column in this table. It says rent range, but it just means your monthly housing costs. So in the context of for-sale housing, that would mean like your PITI, principal interest, taxes, insurance, you know, that you have to set aside each month to pay off.
So a very, very conservative estimate, again, 2017 numbers, 4,600 for-sale units are needed in Odessa, and it's likely several thousand more units now that we're to 2019.
So that kind of provides a very quick overview of just the housing market, and we have a lot of other data and so on that we have in the report. We didn't necessarily want to spend the bulk of this presentation going through that. Just know that, you know, we wanted to make sure to document existing conditions quite well. We have information on developments that are underway and planned and proposed, information that we got on, again, your economy and the nature, not just of your overall market, but some of the nuances about your, like, your oil and gas employee market that were important for us to understand. And so that's, that's all in the report as well. So we wanted to get to and really kind of try to focus on the recommendations that we, that we have based on all of our research and analysis that we've done here. And so what we're going to start off with are a set of, we've called them strategies because they're sort of, they're sort of objectives that the community should look at achieving or working towards, not so much, not so much as recommending a specific, you know, program or, or funding mechanism. These are sort of general objectives that we think need to be, need to be worked for. So we're going to talk, first of all, about strategies to address the rental market. Again, that's, that's where we see just the greatest crisis, you know, where we've heard the greatest amount of suffering, just some really terrible stories sometimes of folks that, and then in most other communities, you know, wouldn't have to go to the food bank because all their income is going to rent, you know, after they've gone to college and should have what's considered to be a decent job. So, you know, it was really eye-opening. And one of the important things that we think needs to happen is we want to have some separation between the general rental market and the rental market that is, the rental housing that's needed by oilfield workers who are well-paid, I mean, that's the issue, right? Is how well they're paid, but also aren't, they're not planning to live in Odessa on a long-term basis. Now, you already have that being addressed to some extent by things like RV parks and man camps. What we're recommending is actually take that further and start addressing segments of this, you know, short-term oil and gas employee market that are not being served by those, not fully served by those types of housing yet. And we, in fact, we talked with the owner or the company that is running most of your local existing man camps, and, you know, one thing that they're doing a pretty good job of serving a certain segment of that market, and that segment is the workers, those temporary workers, whose housing is being contracted by the employer directly with that company. But there's a whole other segment of that market that are folks that are out here working, but the employer is not doing anything on their housing. They have to find their own housing.
These people might be independent contractors, you know, welders, electricians, people like that, that are used to traveling around the country, following, you know, this, this industry or following, you know, construction projects. So these are people, again, that aren't working for a big corporation, you know, but they're, they're independently, you know, employed, they're a non-employer establishment. But these are the type of folks that we believe that the city can, you know, capture as, you know, renters.
And so they're in your rental market now, they're part of the reason that the crisis has gotten to what, they're an important part of the reason that the crisis has gotten to what it is. And so we're recommending that more of that kind of housing be brought into the market, but done on some sort of financial model in a way that does not require, you know, contracting with the employer, that can reach those employees directly, like a multifamily apartment complex would do, you know, if they showed up to look into rented apartment. So we basically are trying to, I'm trying not to use the word segregate them from the market because that has all kinds of negative implications, but in effect, we're trying to do, we're trying to get them separated so that the impact that they have, we're blunting the impact that they have on the general rental market, that other folks, like your teachers and nurses and policemen and all those folks, you know, they're, they're not interfering with their needs and the supply that's available to them. And we know that not everyone likes that kind of housing in the community. not everyone likes that kind of housing in the community. We've heard that during our research and talking with folks. And, by the way, one thing I didn't do at the beginning of this presentation is thank everyone who helped us with getting the research and the data, because some of you are in this room and there's a lot of others who aren't. So everything that, all the information and the time that people took to talk with us, we couldn't have not have done this study at all without that. So thank you very much.
So what is, how, what does this housing look like? Is it still man camps? Is it an apartment building?
I think, you know, there's, it's interesting. We don't necessarily want to put it into any one kind of physical program. We were actually, we did visit a man camp, but we're actually, you know, we were pretty impressed, actually, with the, you know, for the function it's serving, it was actually a pretty decent place. And, you know, that one in particular maintains, it's not only physically very well maintained, but they maintain a pretty tight control on, shall we say, operations and the atmosphere there. So we know that that would have to be, that would have to be part of this program of adding this kind of housing, is not only having physical standards that assure that it's not something that is going to deteriorate quickly. Furthermore, it's really important that when demand goes away, I know the oil and gas industry is not forecasting demand, you know, they think that there's going to be just continued employment growth. We're from Houston, so we know that everything ends eventually. So, you know, at some point, there probably is a downturn in demand from that sector. And when that happens, and there's not people to fill up that kind of housing, then it can be removed and can go away. So physically, I think that's the criteria. I think there's a lot of innovation going on right now in terms of trying to engineer low-cost types of housing. You sent us the article, and, you know, the folks are trying to do it in shipping containers. There's a lot of work going on with prefab or modular housing that's built off-site and brought in. It's not traditional mobile home, but is built on the same idea in terms of the way it's engineered, you know, in terms of production. And so, you know, we can't, we don't want to tie it to any specific physical thing. I know people are going to want to have a picture of that, but...
We do have some pictures that will show, you know, a spectrum of different types of workforce housing that have been done in other parts of the country later on, but...
They're not necessarily sort of temporary.
Yeah. They're, but they are, you know, some examples that you could use. But, yeah, we didn't want to put you in any kind of box by saying that it needs to be, you know, like this. But for sure, the scale is not on the scale of a man camp. That industry is over. They've taken care of that. So the large man camps with thousands of units is not something that we're proposing for this recommendation.
These could all be smaller sites.
Smaller scale, think of a 10-unit or a 20-unit, you know, multifamily building that's art, like, you know, that are just around here, you know, that we see on the way to the meeting. For smaller scale, you know, and maybe not in an apartment building, but, you know, on a vacant lot, or maybe on a drill site, or something like that, where we're putting, you know, we're adding to the tax base by adding stuff onto the market. We're activating parcels that have been, you know, not been activated in the past or born. So this is an incremental, more smaller-scale approach to the man camp.
Right. And then to, again, directly contract with the people who are renting, not the employers.
You say the man camp is taking care of all those large corporations that want to do that, have done it?
Yes. They're contracting straight with the...
And there's no more market for that?
No, no. They, they, that's...
I think they plan on growing, but let's just say it's effectively being, that market is pretty effectively being served, and to the extent that more demand is needed, they're going to provide it, yeah.
Okay.
It would not be a meaningful use of resources to try to compete with that.
With their, yeah.
Because the scale of what they've been able to achieve already is not something that I believe you can compete with.
Right. Now that said, they, that company has enough expertise, and there's probably other providers out there that would be able to help you with knowledge, and maybe even, you know, through working, we'll talk about some of the other organizational aspects that we're recommending, might be able to help out, you know, working towards this strategy as well, you know, under a sort of different financial and organizational model for them. So the next strategy that I want to mention is preserve existing affordable rental units. Now, in a sense, we're already a little late on that, because the units that have been affordable have, you know, had skyrocketing rent, so many of them. And so to some extent, it's trying to pull them back. If you go, think about, I'm not going to scroll back to that slide, but the slide that we showed early on that had the rental price chart and how it dipped in 2016, if you could get what we would like to have is a stock of rental housing, a sizable stock, that basically gets back to the rent levels that you had at that time, because that was doable for your other non-oil and gas folks, workers in your community. Those rents were something they could support, you know, that wasn't crushing them. And so getting a stock of housing that is back to those prices, rental housing back to those prices is important. So we'll talk a little bit in, when we get to implementation strategies, about some ideas on how to go about doing that. But preserving this, in other communities, there's what's called naturally occurring affordable housing, that's basically just rental housing that's old and hasn't been, you know, fixed up so much you can charge fancy rents for it. And so NOAH, NOAA, is becoming a popular acronym in the housing world to talk about that. And you've had that, it's just that your conditions are so extreme that that stock of housing has been, the rents have been pushed up dramatically, even in that, in your older naturally occurring affordable housing. So we need to preserve, bring, get some ownership of that and bring it back to those rents. Again, you'll need to build new affordable rental units, both for the traditional lower-income classes, where you have programs that already exist, like the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, but then also for that workforce, the folks work, you know, earning up to 60,000 or 70,000 dollars a year that are currently, you know, suffering and not eligible for the traditional lower-income housing programs. So getting more of that stock in place is important. And that doesn't have to be necessarily large complexes either. We're going to talk about some ways to try to increase the rental housing stock in other forms. And lastly, perhaps look at directly assisting renters until prices stabilize. To some extent, you have employers that have already been trying to do this because they've had issues recruiting people here and helping them find affordable housing, and so they've had to directly assist them. And this may have to be something that, hopefully on a temporary basis only, would need to be done to, until you've got yourself to a better place in the overall rental housing So on the for-sale side, you know, you actually do have new housing being produced in Odessa that is within price ranges that we're talking about needing. It's just that more of it needs to happen. You know, we heard stories, you know, about long waiting lists for some of these homes. And in fact, it's at such a price range that people are moving out of the rental market when they might not have ordinarily have done so, and they're moving into homeownership just because it's more affordable. So that's, you know, in some of these newer homes. So we know that that housing is being produced, we just need more of it. And one way to make sure that you can produce more of that housing is to facilitate the availability and construction of the infrastructure, because you can't have, you can't have a new traditional housing subdivision without common water, sewer, drainage, and streets. So to the extent that infrastructure can be made available to new sites and within developments, to have some way of making that more affordable, and for infill sites, helping them access existing infrastructure in an affordable manner, that will help provide housing in those price ranges that are so needed. Because otherwise, if the developer has to go in and put in all that upfront infrastructure themselves, and there's no way to offset that cost, they really have to bake that into the price of the home. And so that's going to further push home prices up. Secondly, one thing we heard about this constraint on getting more housing, more for-sale housing supply, is the availability of labor. And this is sort of the, sort of systematic existential problem that the whole community is having with labor, in that competition from the oilfield that pays so well and beyond the ability of what the housing construction industry can generally pay these kind of workers. So they're getting poached, and furthermore, workers that they would like to recruit to come in specifically, might be willing to work specifically for housing and not go to the oilfield, are themselves having trouble finding places to live. And so that discourages them from coming here. So, you know, we have sort of a cyclical, a, you've heard of the word term virtuous cycle, or we have a non-virtu, we have the opposite in that respect happening right now. And so we need to find ways to facilitate that labor ability, and part of that has to do with providing them housing as well. And lastly, directly assisting home buyers. You have a lot of folks that, income-wise, probably could move into for-sale housing, but because they lack, for example, lack a sufficient down payment, they can't get in, and so they're stuck in the rental market. I mentioned folks that are voluntarily moving out of the rental market, while there's other folks that probably would like to go into for-sale, but they're involuntarily stuck in the rental market. So there's ways to directly assist them and educate them about, you know, in advance about, you know, prepping their financial situation to get them into homeownership. Okay, so a third category of strategy that we want, that we address, you have an immediate need in terms of housing supply and pricing, that's sort of your crisis. But then you sort of have a long-term, think of it as a long-term crisis, and something that's developed over the decades. And that is the fact that because of the nature of your economy, you have a housing market that has been subject to a lot of cyclical forces related basically to the oil and gas industry. And when that kind of thing goes on, sometimes that discourages the sort of needed investments in housing that the private sector might otherwise make. Because if I'm a developer and I'm looking at doing like a large multifamily complex, or I'm looking at doing a large subdivision, a single-family subdivision, or just, you know, other kinds of large investments that are going to take, that are going to take time to generate the financial return that's needed, if I'm scared that, you know, the next cycle's going to come along and it's all, you know, going to go down the tubes and I will have wasted my money, that's a discouraging thing from getting that kind of investment. And part of the reason, there's only so much you can do about the cyclical nature of the economy, granted, I mean, that's been the oil and gas industry for how many, you know, 100 years or more. But one thing that can be done to sort of stabilize Odessa as a place to live and thus translate to some extent into its housing market, is to create that kind of community that is inherently desirable. And we think that a strategy that you need to do that, this is mainly means creating a community that is, okay, maybe the job market isn't great, but Odessa is still a great place to live, because the kind of community you've created here is something that is comparable to great communities elsewhere in Texas and around the nation. And we think that an important way to start to head that direction, because we don't think you're there yet, and we think there's work to be done. And that's going to take some reorientation about the way that your public policy and your city organizational environment is structured, where you're shifting to an emphasis more on planning, holistic planning, about integrating, getting the kind of supply of housing and other kinds of real estate products that are needed to satisfy demand, in combination with adequate infrastructure and quality of life, and making it happen in a way that eases the burden on the city's own residents. So that's going to take a lot of, it takes a sort of shift in thinking, and oftentimes a shift in organization, a shift in staffing. And we think that this is something that needs to start happening. We heard, for example, that there hadn't been a new park built in Odessa in 30 years, I think it was. And that was kind of a shock, you know, because it's not like you haven't grown it all in 30 years. So that kind of opened our eyes to maybe looking at this issue as sort of something that at a high level needs to change.
And in most cities, you know, the development community, the first thing they do when they're coming into a market is they're going to go look at, you know, what is the city's plan, you know, what is their housing plan, what is, you know, what are their, what is their vision for what they want this city to look like? And that's going to, in some ways, guide their development. And so that's what we're talking about here, is, you know, just creating the culture in the development community and in the city as well, that can, you know, work together with philanthropic, you know, the corporate industry and local folks as well, and the city, and all come together to create opportunities.
Right. It's not just a city, City of Odessa as a public entity, it's not purely only their responsibility.
And it doesn't have to be a master plan or a comprehensive plan, it doesn't have to be some large undertaking of that scale. And that's why I used the example here in this slide. This was done from a private urban planning firm that was hired by a town of your similar size. So this is a good example of what a town your size of 117,000 folks can accomplish. So, and this isn't built yet, it's still conceptual, but Catalyst Urban Development, which is, you know, a small urban planning firm based here in Texas, they helped conceive this project, which is the Town Central concept for Richardson. And so I think this is the type of development, you know, that could create that, the housing and placemaking that Odessa needs, that would, you know, keep folks here long-term, but also provide short-term, you know, solutions for rental opportunities as well.
We want to, that term placemaking means turning everything that is special about Odessa's people into making it as equally special about the place.
I agree exactly, I agree with what you're saying. One of the things that drives cost up here, though, is if a developer buys a section, 30 to 35% of it is used by oil, whether it be drilling sites, pipeline easements, things like that. So you're inherently driving the cost up on the developer, because you're only using 65% of that land, but you had to buy the entire section.
We're going to, we're going to talk about that a little bit. So we'll get to that. We think that there needs to be, on a long-term basis, a new organization created that's not part of the City of Odessa bureaucratic organization or really any other existing government agency. It's sort of its own animal, although it gets participation and involvement from those other agencies, and from the private development community and nonprofits and philanthropic efforts that is basically devoted to addressing workforce housing. And so this would be, this is, this is a big deal. We, this is pretty central to a lot of the following recommendations that we'll go into. But the need for a new, well-funded, well-funded, and capable organization with active involvement across government and other entities, and the right kind of staffing, needs to be in place to move things forward. Because we just don't think that any existing organization necessarily has the capability or the mission to address the special needs of the housing market here. And so we'll talk about in a minute about the things we see that organization doing.
And, you know, because it's costly for developers to buy these chunks of, you know, land that's undeveloped, this is an example of infill housing. So not everything has to be this large-scale, you know, master plan solution. This is an example of workforce housing, which is called infill. So it's using existing infrastructure on existing lots, you know, in a city. This is in Boulder, Colorado. This is one of our wars, because it's actually a for-sale model that uses very little subsidy. And so it's a mixed-income model where... And so it's a mixed-income model where the market rate units basically subsidize the low-market rate units. But this provides homeownership opportunities, and it also utilizes existing infrastructure and existing land, so you're not having to have those high costs of going and purchasing undeveloped land and then getting infrastructure to it, and then 30% of it is unusable. This would be something that could be done, and I think that's where the greatest opportunity for Odessa is in terms of workforce housing, is this incremental approach that utilizes existing lots and existing infrastructure, maybe vacant properties or blighted properties, and using that, focusing on that first, and then going to the more larger-scale projects, you know, for more long-term solutions.
Is that modular?
No, I don't believe so. These are, yeah, these are all, yes.
I said it. Modular could easily, you know?
This could easily be two shipping containers stacked on top of each other, or four stacked on top of each other. So there's a lot of different ways that you could achieve this model from the construction side of it. But that's what I wanted to provide, is just some ideas and some examples that have shown success, have won awards, but have also shown that they can be, you know, profitable and yet still affordable at the same time. That can be, you know, subsidy utilizing or non-subsidy utilizing. So again, not to put Odessa in a box to say, it has to be done this one way, but to say, here's a picture, and then whatever way you have to get there, you know, that's the way you get there.
So an element of long-term stability and place-making that we think is important is sort of continuing to, the effort to sort of realize the untapped potential of downtown Odessa and the surrounding core neighborhoods. Again, this gets to the point of, it's kind of a two-pronged benefit that you could realize. One is that there are folks that you may want to recruit to Odessa that kind of prefer sort of that, you know, maybe especially if they're, you know, hey, I'm going to live here for five or six years and try to make the most of my time here, and then I'll, you know, we'll see what happens. But while I'm here, I want to make the most of my time, and I like living in the middle of a vibrant, you know, small city like Odessa. And you really don't have good options for that aspect of the market right now. I mean, you have a lot of, there's oil and gas workers even that seek out that kind of housing situation, and you're not really offering that kind of product. And so there's folks that would be willing to pay for that kind of housing. Furthermore, you also have anchor employers in your central core area, like here, where we are at the moment, in the college, you have the healthcare institutions, you have government, that all have employees that might like to live close to where they work. And so you can help satisfy that demand. And lastly, to the extent that housing, housing is usually an important element when you're trying to create sort of an active, lively urban place, because that's people that are sort of out there, they're in the community, it's active, there's people on the sidewalks, you know you're not in a dead zone when there's housing there, that the rest of the community gets, it helps the rest of the community enjoy downtown and the core neighborhoods as well. And they get to view it as an asset that they view as adding to their quality of life here, and that further helps stabilize the community even when you have downtowns.
And I guess the good and bad thing about having such high, you know, rents in Odessa is that comparing it to a city like Philadelphia, you guys probably pay the same rates as what they pay. So we can use examples like that. So in Philadelphia, this is a nonprofit workforce housing developer, and they strictly only develop on existing vacant city-owned property. So they, again, talking about activating, you know, dormant or unused parcels, there are organizations and there are specific examples that do exist that you could partner with or you could look to as an example or a model to follow, and this is one of them, you know, using existing infrastructure, existing parcels that are not being utilized that could provide that housing and that kind of critical mass in places like downtown and the core neighborhoods that you want to have people patronizing, going there and eating and going to the bar and, you know, doing things like that. So this is doing both, you know, we're providing workforce housing and we're creating, you know, places that people want to be.
Right. And I'll just say that, you know, the fact that your rents are so high, you've already overcome a hurdle that a lot of other cities have, like Houston had for many, many years when rents weren't high enough to be able to make market-rate downtown housing construction feasible, financially feasible. Well, you're at those rents, so that hurdle's already overcome. The last thing I want to mention is, again, this idea of making Odessa an inherently desirable community from a place and a physical and quality of life perspective, really being out there, you have, you have new housing coming in, it's not always bringing with it a lot of quality-of-life amenities, it's providing shelter, that's awfully important. But it's what you see sometimes in other communities, in most other communities in Texas, is that large-scale housing development usually includes a lot of amenities for the residents to improve their quality of life. And then you have a lot of existing neighborhoods here in Odessa that could really use those amenities, maybe, and we saw a lot of, for example, we did see parks, but they weren't always in the greatest of shape. So we think there's a lot of room for investment to really extend quality of life, quality of place amenities. It's not just parks and trails, although those are very important these days. But, you know, everything from light removal to landscaping and sidewalks, safe streets, all that kind of thing, you know, there's going to have to be a renewed emphasis to really bring that throughout the city.
And again, I just want to show the two kind of ways of creating solutions. You know, we can have these incremental, smaller scale, and then also these larger scale. But the picture on the bottom right is an example of, you know, something that Odessa already has. So something like the Mountain Bike Park, this is, you know, the local Odessa Bicycle Association, Odessa Mountain Bike Park, I'm sorry, this is the Permian Basin Bicycle Association, but this is, these folks, these guys came out here and did this stuff, you know, on their own. So this proves that you've got the building blocks in Odessa, the community buy-in, you know, the interest and attractiveness that you've already got here. Another thing that's already been done here in the city is the Disc Golf Association. So you've got three disc golf parks, you've got the Mountain Bike Park, you know, these are the type of city amenities that everyone can go and enjoy, and that your population is already showing that they are supporting it on their own, right? And so these are, these are opportunities that the city and that philanthropic and that other organizations can partner up and team with and create solutions for. I wish I could have removed all the buildings from behind that other picture, that's Buffalo Bike Park in Houston, and all this is, is wood and sand. So, and again, just like the Mountain Bike Park, not all these things have to be this grand, you know, large-scale, master plan, you know, landscape amenities. They can be very incremental, and they can be very kind of low-impact and low-cost. It just takes, you know, organizing and convening folks, convening folks all to the table with the same interests together, and you've already got that going on naturally on its own. So you've got opportunities that we can build on.
So this is just another aspect of that. I mentioned the master plan communities, and really having considered like structuring your policy environment to encourage when you have developers coming in on the building larger-scale residential developments, that they are doing it to have, being in the same sort of train of concept as what you see in large-scale master plan communities in the rest of Texas. We have great, great examples in Texas of really high-quality master plan communities that integrate quality-of-life amenities into the development. And there's policy initiatives that can be undertaken to try to help make that happen. And so you don't have to be a really major metro to necessarily have these kind of high-quality developments, like this example here of St. George, Utah.
So this is an example, contrary to what I have been mentioning, of a large master plan type of project that also provides a city amenity. So this is in St. George, Utah, so they have, you know, similar climate, similar geography, you know, they don't have a lot of landscape, right, amenities. But they do have a plan for 3,350-acre master plan development, and within that, you know, they're making sure that, the city is making sure through planning and through that process that, you know, there is parks and other types of public amenities, retail, you know, bike, pedestrian-oriented transportation infrastructure to get people from housing to retail. These are all city amenities that, again, they can be incorporated into these large master plan, large-scale projects, but they could also be incremental, and things that connect projects like this to existing amenities in the city.
So now, moving on to the final set of points, we have basically, I think in the report at least, it's numbered as 15 implementation and funding recommendations. So I'll try to run through them relatively quickly. But the first one, again, gets back to this new organization that we talked about. It's a philanthropic coalition to address housing, workforce housing especially, that's who referred to one of its sort of core missions as providing a navigation center. We'll talk about that again in a second. But this is, it's critical that this organization pull in, not just from your existing government groups and so on, but also from your major corporate and business entities. You have established corporate community that is active in this area. We think there's a lot of space for them to work on this issue and contribute very significant funding. And so that is, that piece is really going to be critical, is having a real financial commitment to make this an effective organization. Housing Odessa workers, this is basically providing a central point for new workers, especially those who are not in the oil and gas industry, that might be having other, you know, the ones that are facing the most serious challenges about housing affordability and availability, helping them ease the process of getting them a home, whether that's in existing housing or the facilitation of new housing to give them shelter. So another role for, and a key one on the financial end in addressing this sort of gap that we're talking about, is, and you remember, a strategy I mentioned was preservation of existing affordable housing. So, yes, getting it back to like those 2016 rent levels. So in terms of rental housing, this entity could play a part in the acquisition of existing rental properties, either like whole apartment complexes or more smaller-scale individual homes or duplexes and what have you. The thing that, the key role that we're recommending they play is not so much with their own funds buying everything outright, because that wouldn't get you very far, if you had a lot of money. The idea is that when you have, for example, a rental property, and, you know, at your current rents, that property has a certain investment value that would be the price that whoever owns that property is going to add, you know, if they're going to sell it to you. And they're assuming that those rents are going to keep going, and that the property value is tied to that existing high rent level. And we're trying to say, we want a property that charges back in 2016-level rents. And an investor that would own that property needs to buy, needs to put their money in at a market value appropriate to those 2016-level rents. So you have a gap, and it's that gap that we're suggesting that this new housing entity address through some sort of financial contribution or way of providing, you know, extra secondary loans and things like that, so that an investor would be interested in coming in and owning a property at those lower rent levels that are probably, that's going to be a low-risk proposition for them. If they only have to put in so much money, they know that Odessa is going to have reliable demand at those 2016 rent levels. That's a pretty safe investment for them. The issue is getting the value of the property, for them to be able to acquire the property at the value that makes sense for a financial return for them. And that's where we think that gap is what this entity needs to address. It also can do that for for-sale business, for-sale housing, like you were talking about, where we have the issue of the gap in what's actually developable versus the cost to acquire the whole property, because it's encumbered with various kinds of oil and gas interests. And same kind of thing, infill sites, it's basically the same idea that this entity is helping to acquire those infill sites, you know, to the extent that we can make those drill sites, get those released by some oil and gas firms, and acquire those for housing. And, you know, infill sites are such a huge opportunity, because again, you don't have to extend the infrastructure. In most places, it's hopefully in good enough shape to accommodate new housing. Plus, you help revitalize areas and so on, there's just, there's multiple layers of benefits to aggressively acquiring infill sites. The city might be able to help where there's tax delinquent properties, the state has a lengthy process that the cities have to go through in order to make those available, but it could be worth it. And other sites are just going to be generally available on the market. And we think that this entity, again, needs to be well-funded, but can bring its financial capacity to bear and help make that happen.
And a quick pop quiz, where's this?
This picture.
This is Rasco Ave. So this isn't a one-for-one example, because it's not philanthropic, but this is the kind of idea that we're trying to get at. A company has just come in, just in the last few months, and they've shown that, and whether this actual site they're using is what they're using for, as a showroom, for their metal building, housing that they're proposing, whether it's a showroom or whether it's a place that they'll end up, you know, actually renting out to folks, doesn't matter. The point is, is that they figured out how to utilize a parcel that's right next to an active well, okay? So it's proof that even if there's an active well or a drill site, there's still ways to create housing on those, okay? So just to think that there's no opportunity, it would be, would be a bad idea. There's a lot of opportunity to use these sites as infill and to provide, you know, some sort of housing within the spectrum that's needed in Odessa.
And we're already aware, I mean, from just driving around, it became pretty apparent that Odessans are relatively more tolerant of oil and gas infrastructure being close to their homes than people perhaps in other communities that might be. So, I mean, this is just kind of taking me some in there.
And I know it's not really 100% fair comparison, because it's not technically in the city limits, and it's just out, you know, five feet outside the city limits, and it's technically in the county, and so they don't have to adhere to, you know, the same standards. But the point is, is that this is, I believe, an example that the private market has already shown that we know how to utilize these types of parcels, and, you know, we can make things that we believe, you know, the market will absorb.
We think that it's important, you do have...
I have a question. Was that property, where was it? Was it south or west?
That's on the west, that's on the west side of Odessa.
It's on Rasco Avenue.
Oh, I know where it is.
Parallels, West County Road, that's blocks west, West County Road.
That's, yeah, that's Rasco.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was over there yesterday.
Another element of the partnership that needs to have, that needs to be facilitated by this new organization is reaching out to your existing and potentially new nonprofit or specialist affordable housing developers. You know, you've had, in the Odessa Midland area, there's already Habitat for Community, that's one, that's a single-family typically developer. You have, what was Jill's organization, the Finance Corporation?
The Health and Finance.
Corporation. So there, but then there's others that are out there working in communities in Texas, and they just may not know that, you know, Odessa's a place that really needs their help, every bit as much. And so reaching, and they do a great job, these folks know how to do this kind of housing and do it in a really, really quality way. So we think reaching out and having a marketing effort on the part of this housing organization... So we think reaching out and having a marketing effort on the part of this housing organization, this new housing organization, to these folks to identify opportunities for them to come to Odessa, help them find sites, perhaps execute financial agreements to help ease the financial burden that they would face. Just getting them to town and looking for opportunities to do housing is going to be important and financially facilitating or assisting them as well.
So the National Affordable Housing Trust, I just wanted to take a screenshot from their website, and these are, they have a whole list of nonprofit, you know, multifamily housing developers. So there are folks out there, foundations and nonprofit developers, and for-profit developers that are out there to provide multifamily and rental housing opportunities. So they're out there and they're waiting to be partnered.
Right. So here's kind of a special recommendation that we have, and that is to help get folks to sort of increase the supply and increase the ability, increase the supply of for sale housing and rental housing, and furthermore to facilitate folks who might be otherwise financially challenged to be able to get into homeownership. Working with the financial institutions that are originating mortgages and qualifying people for mortgages to allow rental income in units that are onsite at a home to be counted towards their qualified income. Sometime, we've heard that there's some institutions that do this, but it's not necessarily a widespread practice. And we think that when you have housing products like duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, or accessory dwelling units that are like garage apartments or backyard cabana housing or something like that, that can be rented out, that that's, that income stream from renting that out to local workers who need that rental housing should be allowed to count towards the mortgage qualification of the home buyer.
And again, this is a local example. So you've got duplexes being built here, brand new. This was back in October when we were here.
These are all rentals, it's just a physical example of some duplexes.
So you've got this going on already now. Do we know if they got, if their owner occupied with the other unit being rented and it's counted as rental income? We don't know. But we do know that from the standpoint of a housing product, this is a housing product that the market here has shown propensity to consume and absorb and also the ability of developers to get this product built on the ground on existing lots in the city that already are served by infrastructure.
We mentioned that this is just the single family side of the specialist developers in affordable and workforce housing. So...
Again, a local example, this is the house on Lauderdale Avenue that was built by Habitat here in Odessa.
Right. So again, another role on the philanthropic side, we talked a lot about, really, on the sort of long-term stability basis, creating the quality of life and community appeal, the permanent sort of community appeal for Odessa. And so there's unquestionably a role for philanthropic partnerships to make that happen. Other cities in Texas, you actually have Odessa Parks Board that is, that can be, they ramp up their efforts, there's other resources that can be brought to bear. You're seeing great examples from around the country and especially just here in just the Texas and Oklahoma area, just amazing examples of this in Houston, in Dallas, in Tulsa, that where just transformative quality of life investments are being done primarily by the philanthropic sector.
In most cities, it's very typical that local youth sports, parks, recreation, things like that are heavily, heavily sponsored by the corporate world. And we believe that that's an opportunity for Odessa.
And then in terms of, we talked about increasing the supply of affordable rental housing, we think there could be direct efforts to partner with specific industries or specific institutions, your educational institutions, your healthcare institutions, your government agencies, to have a program where you're actually doing new development that is catered specifically to those organizations, those employers. And folks who are coming to town or need housing, that they're being hired, you're trying to bring new teachers to town. I mean, we heard about the teacher deficit here, and this would be a solution to try to facilitate them getting that, those desired recruits into Odessa and getting them housing because that's been the primary obstacle for accommodating that new employment. So, but that's going to take deliberate partnerships between that new housing organization and those specific institutional and government employers.
And this particular example is of what we were talking about earlier with the gap financing. This is an existing market rate multifamily apartment in just north of Houston, about 20 miles north of Houston, but Turner Impact Capital Housing Fund is an example of a fund, an investment fund, and they only exist to acquire existing multifamily and make sure that they preserve the existing prices so that it's affordable to local workers like teachers, healthcare, and government, city workers. So this is an example of what we talked about. It's not some crazy idea that's really happening. Turner Impact Capital, they have acquired, I believe, somewhere in the range of 6,000 units across the entire country, Las Vegas, Atlanta, Houston, San Antonio, Dallas. And this is what they do. They provide that engine for acquiring what's existing and making sure that the price is preserved at what's affordable for local workers.
And we know that some of the employers in this category have already been trying to do, oh, yeah, we have four units that we use to try to accommodate some of these folks. They've gone out and tried to done it themselves. What we're suggesting is that they leverage this new entity and the resources it can provide to do something on a bigger scale. And maybe not just institution by institution, but like UTVV and Odessa College and your healthcare institutions, and doing it all together for like a larger scale project instead of just one offs.
So like that example right there, they are only allowing certain industries to break that.
They certainly, their income restricting them, first of all, to what we call workforce. So not low income, but...
The missing middle.
Yes.
Those folks between 40 and 60,000 that the market is not creating things that they can affordably rent or buy.
But they're not, picking specific industries like...
You could, can, you care, you can, you absolutely can. Yeah, you could partner with the school district, all the employers like what Steve had just mentioned are potential partners to partner with...
Government.
Yes, yes. And those partners, right, those employers as the partner, they're providing housing for their employees.
Right. There's probably some level of commitment from the employer partner, of financial commitment that they're, what we're trying to say is that the philanthropic entity, the housing entity, is hopefully providing a much larger share of that. It's really the one, bringing its resources into the equation is what really allows you to do this at a bigger scale.
But are they coming in and buying already existing property and then turning it into that?
You could do either.
Because in our environment, the cost of buying something that already exists is just too high.
That's what we had mentioned about that gap, about providing that gap financing between someone who would buy it at a 2016 valuation, and then that gap funding would compensate the seller for the gap between 16 and 18 performance.
I mean, that applies to not just existing built housing, but even like, if a company was releasing, a whole company was releasing a drill site, you think they're going to price, they may not, they may choose to just say market value, right? And so that might, that might include the gap that has to be filled. And so that would be another opportunity for this entity to come in and help write down the value of that so that perhaps a workforce housing development could happen, could be made feasible. So another thing that, now switching sort of from that kind of philanthropic housing entity role to look at specifically the city of Odessa as things it can do internally. One thing that we heard, we heard about some of the progress that the city has been making in terms of improving its development permitting and review and planning processes, and so that's good. But we did hear consistently from a large number of the folks that we talked to in the private sector during the course of our research, that there's still areas where improvement is needed. And furthermore, given the housing situation in Odessa, there's really, any amount of difficulties that result in time delays, unnecessary time delays or unanticipated costs that happen during the process are only sort of exacerbating the level of issues and crisis that is happening. And so there's really, there's really very, there's really no room for error right now. And so we think that working on a process of continuous improvement to ensure that as developments are proposed and planned and go into construction, that the permitting, review, and inspection process remains consistent, that if there's a need for someone who has a project that's getting underway to make a change, that it's known upfront and isn't approved and then unapproved later, that's something we've heard about a lot. Also, we know that the city has a lot of challenges, is part of this whole unvirtuous cycle that's going on in terms of the labor availability, and that workers, it's short on certain kinds of workers that are needed for these tasks, and getting those workers hired and into town, they face the same housing issues as everybody else. So there needs to be resources devoted to making sure that those workers can be hired and that they can find housing. So it may entail direct assistance to them because this is, this is an issue that needs to be, that does have to be addressed, and the proper resources have to be devoted to the issue. And one other thing that we heard about, by the way, we talked about infill and what a great opportunity it is, the labor shortage has forced the city to have to outsource the tapping of the existing infrastructure lines for those kinds of projects. And the fees to do that are much, much higher, and those fees go directly, have to go directly into the price that the developer, they have to basically raise the price of the housing that would be built to accommodate that. So that's a direct instance where being able to staff back up, to be able to do that internally with the city and get those tap fees back down would have a direct benefit to the cost of housing, of new housing in Odessa. And so I think that the city, the city and the community will have to make a commitment to making sure that the proper resources are devoted to the city as an organization so all these things can be improved and continue to be improved, to have a model process going forward that facilitates all these other objectives that we've been talking about. So getting back to that issue of temporary removable worker housing, we're not suggesting that the city necessarily get, become a developer of that kind of housing, but certainly look for ways in its regulations, its policies, to make sure that that kind of housing can be allowed on appropriate sites and that the kinds of standards, quality standards for both physical construction and the operation of those facilities meets the community's needs. And so the city has a direct role to play in facilitating more of that housing happening in the market. And furthermore, we even theorize that perhaps this is a way, in terms of addressing some of those staffing issues, we're getting new, getting new city staff to town and finding them housing. Maybe this is a way of, to the extent that they can be involved in adding to the supply of housing, there could be temporary housing that is, preferences given to new city workers just so they can get them in and get them shelter until they can find permanent housing. So again, just trying to break that non-virtuous cycle and using this as a way to do that. We talked about earlier the using the rental income to help subsidize or help qualify folks for their mortgage. Going along with that is a physical housing type, and we suggest, we did not do an intensive review of the city's allowed housing types and locations zoning policies, but we suggest that the city make sure that its regulations allow for a full range of housing types. This is an issue that we're seeing publicized around the country where one way to get a larger stock of housing, even in existing areas that don't have the site for a, say, a large new apartment complex, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, where you have small-scale buildings, but they're providing new rental units. These are not expensive, the construction costs here, you can deliver something like this at a relatively reasonable cost. So the required rent that's needed to make this a justifiable investment, that the required rent you need out of a unit in one of these, in a building like this is not as high as it would be if you're building a fancy new multifamily complex that has multi-story and has a big pool and a cinema room or whatever. These can be much more basic, and we emphasize that the city should make sure that these kinds of, this kind of housing is allowed. It's a way to revitalize neighborhoods, infill available sites where you already have infrastructure, and add housing on an incremental basis. The city of Minneapolis just changed its zoning ordinance to allow, from areas that were designated single-family only, single-family detached only, it just changed its ordinance to say, anywhere where we had that, up to triplexes are now allowed, period, everywhere. So cities are really looking at this because this kind of housing disappeared from the landscape, in the new development landscape primarily since the 1950s. And there's an increasing realization that we need to start bringing it back because it's an important part of providing needed and affordable housing in the community. So we were informed that you have, since we started this project, that you have created a TURS, Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, in your downtown area. And we think that's a great thing. It's going to, should be a really useful tool. We would suggest, going back to the earlier strategy about turning your city core into a place, it's a placemaking asset for both residents who live in that core as well as the overall community, the TURS will be, should be an effective mechanism to be in place. And furthermore, state law allows TURS funds to be spent on things that will, housing will find useful and will help make it more marketable and sometimes more financially feasible, both in terms of public space improvements like streetscape and parks and plazas and general improvements to public space, historic facade renovations, certain kinds of environmental rehab like asbestos cleanup if you're trying to do an adaptive reuse of an older building into housing. And also, there's certain provisions that allow TURS funds to be directly subsidized affordable housing as well. So there could be opportunity there to really use this new TURS to help push housing development within the downtown area. We also want your older, I mean, we drove around enough to see that you have a lot of older housing that probably could play a bigger and more useful role in providing housing to the community for low mod and workforce income folks if it was in better shape. And so we want, you should be getting the most out of your existing housing stock. And so we would suggest, furthermore, having, obviously having severe deterioration of housing or any structure in amongst other housing, kind of is a quality of life negative for the surrounding neighbors. So we suggest addressing that by pairing active code enforcement with a renovation assistance program. So you're trying to not just have, you know, there's carrot and stick. We're not saying that, well, you need to really get a bigger stick only. We're saying you may have to get a bigger stick and more actively pursue code enforcement to remove those kind of physical, that kind of physical deterioration, but you're offering people help in making that happen. Whoever owns that, you know, I realize some houses may, it may be hard to find exactly what the ownership is and that can be an issue in a lot of communities, but for wherever you're at least able to have direct communication with the owner of the property, put a program in place that will help subsidize their renovation costs. the property, put a program in place that will help subsidize their renovation costs because they may not, that's part of the reason that they probably have deteriorations is that they don't have the personal financial capability to make the fixes and improvements that are needed to get the house back in shape.
And although all this stuff sounds very, you know, hard and it's not easy, but there are existing nonprofits and other types of foundations that will provide the city with the technical assistance to get these types of regulations created and written. And a lot of times, that can be, you know, one of the hardest challenges for a city is finding the kind of, the internal capacity and acumen to really get this stuff written and out and implemented in a way that's, you know, fair and effective and legal. And there are, there are organizations out there that can help. With every suggestion, strategy, recommendation we've provided, there's almost always some type of technical assistance out there. And for the code enforcement side, vacant property research network is essentially the leader in doing this.
And I'll just say that you don't want people gaming the system. Like, you wouldn't want somebody, you know, who goes and buys a blighted house and then gets some sort of public help, you know, public funds or other funds to help fix it up and then turns around and rents it for 2,200 a month, right? Because that's not really helping your situation. So, you could tie maximum rental rate requirements or income requirements of the, if they're renting it out or something like that. You can attach other requirements, you know, as far as receiving the assistance to try to avoid those kinds of games we play. As far as, you know, sort of larger scale or what we might call greenfield types of development, you know, if you have someone who wants to come in and do a new subdivision on vacant land, one way to help keep the cost that they have to ask for those homes lower is by having an agreement to reimburse the cost of some, at least some of the public infrastructure that they have to put in. Now, Texas already has a model for that in terms of certain kinds of special districts. You may have heard of municipal utility districts or MUDs. There's also public improvement districts. TERZs can also do this if you wanted to create a TERS for a new project. Where basically, it's saying that the developer may have to front all the costs of that infrastructure, but once they've put property value on the ground by building homes and other things, that some of the costs that they had to put in for that public infrastructure comes back to them. And if it's a big enough scale, you can even issue, like for example, MUDs and TERZs, well, PIS as well, can issue bond financing so the payback occurs in a shorter financial timeframe. So, you have to have a, you know, you have to have a certain scale to really make that feasible. But that is something that's common elsewhere and we think the city should be looking at those kind of tools. And furthermore, making, having eligibility requirements for new development, not just to necessarily get the housing on the ground, but also saying you need to, you know, it's going to be tied to saying you have to operate at a certain price. You need to, you need to bring amenities, sort of quality level to the project, like what we were talking about. And even those amenities, if they are willing to make them available to the public, like, oh, we'll put in a trail. I mean, that trail, especially if it's going to be, if you're, if they're going to get a public tax dollar reimbursement for that because it could be reimbursed as long as it's, as long as it's a public trail and available to the public. So, there's a lot of room to use these kind of tools to help not only deliver new affordable, more affordable housing, but also add quality amenities to the community. The last thing we're going to suggest is that we've talked a lot about, you know, bringing in outside sources of funding to a lot of these things, especially from sort of a philanthropic perspective. And we think that that should be the, a huge message in terms of providing financial resources. It's a critical message that is, should be at the top of the list. But the city, not only internal, in terms of internal organization and policies and so on, has, you know, that needs to take some actions, but we think that they should consider also doing their part. And Betsy actually has kind of talked about that a little bit in terms of the public sector making sure that it is doing its part financially for this as well.
Thank you, guys. And for those who don't know, the city council has a 5:00 meeting at C Hall. So, we are pushed for time and I need to, I have to leave. What, when I am here now as the chair of ODC, and I have not talked to my fellow female ODC members, but I am proposing, because this is so vital to economic development, that I am proposing that ODC takes the lead on creating HOW, Housing for Odessa Workers, and that we put our money where our mouth is. And I am asking for ODC members, with, all of this has to be approved and have the support of the city council. I am asking ODC to put up $5 million into a fund to be used, however it is going to be used, to be determined by the group that began all of this back how many months ago. We have already scheduled another meeting for March 20th at 7:30 at Odessa Regional Medicine for everybody who is interested to come back, parse out all of the responsibilities and projects that they have talked about. I am also thanking council member Bryant because he sent to Renee a couple months ago an article about things that the city of Austin is doing. And in that, just cursory reading of it, I found three projects that I think we could get started pretty quickly. One of them is, Austin has a fund whereby, this is specific to people with low income, that they have to pay 30% of their income goes to a housing thing. It's done through their employer. And then this fund pays the gap of whatever the rent actually is. I think we could do that. I don't know exactly how. There are a lot of people who are much smarter than I, but there is a template already in place. It could be some of the $5 million that I'm asking the ODC and city council to approve could be used for that. I don't know. It could be that we have other philanthropic efforts come together and put money for that. But I think that is something we can readily investigate and see how we can put that into action. Another thing that Austin has that I think we can address is a community land trust. In Austin, they have taken lands that are owned by all of the various entities that we've got here. And instead of purchasing a lot, somebody can lease that lot from that entity so that they don't have that cost as part of getting their home constructed. So, again, I think that's something that we can parse out and somebody look at it and see if this is good. And if it is good, then see if we can help to get this done.
I'll just note, I'm sorry to interrupt, but just note that the city of Houston just announced a program to create a similar land trust on a large scale. So, we're talking hundreds or thousands of houses that they're trying to do through that.
We can talk to Houston to see how they're doing it. Anyway, at that website, there's just all sorts of other stuff that we can check out. I am not asking the city of Odessa to do all of this, Michael, but I am because they're overwhelmed and understaffed as it is. And this is going to be a heck of a lot of responsibility that we just cannot, although we do need your hand, you're not rid of me yet, sorry. You're stuck with me. I am asking ODC, Tim, Melanie, Jean, Tim is on a business pitch in Dallas. And we have got to have the buy-in of the city council. Y'all buy in to have it on this work. And I'm also asking everybody in the room, and I'm asking everybody else in Odessa who is tired of saying, who is going to do something and when are they going to do it? Well, we are the who. In fact, I wanted to call it who instead of how, working, workforce housing Odessa. But then that would get to be kind of like the who's on first kind of, and I didn't think y'all would agree with that. So, I'm asking all of you to meet Renee and me on March 20th at 7:30 at ORN City. And we're going to start parsing this stuff out. I thank Judge Debbie Hayes for being here. I think, where's Michael? Sorry, Michael Wise. And Kelly, thank y'all for being here with PSP. Thank you. I don't know how we're going to get you. I don't know if we need you, but we're sure glad you're here. And I think this gives you some insight as to what Odessa is willing to do. And we're going to get to work. So, I'm asking all of you to join us. And if you have any other quick questions before the city council has to leave, please.
My question.
Quick question.
Good.
In the structure of this, how, not the who, the how, is there, is there a paid person? I mean, it seems to me that somebody that knows how to do this needs to be involved.
There's...
I'm not saying Betsy doesn't know how. I'm saying...
No, I don't, I don't know. I don't know how, but I know how to ask questions.
Well, I'm asking this question, so...
We are looking to Rick Knapper, the Better Person, months ago, said if we can have one of your employees. And this could be how that person would be. We don't know if that person has a skill set either. But that is a potential place. We don't know if this is temporary for two years, if your life, I believe, runs out. I don't know. What I do know is we'll get those answers when we all sit at the table and find out what's going on.
So, is there, I mean, it seems to me that there is a, there is an expertise here that is similar to your expertise and that knows that there is this Turner Trust and knows that there are all the, I mean, this is a, this is a huge stack of information. So, is there, is there a school or certification or something that trains people, that people know about this?
It's typically someone with an AICP certification. And that's, that's something that we have from the body of the report, but it's, that's typically who it is as a city planning director with an AICP certification with, you know, at least five to 10 years in that role. But it doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, that individual.
Right. And there are people who are very specialized in affordable housing or housing policy in general. There's national organizations that can be recruited from, that people who run these kind of organizations in other communities. I mean, this is not, even though this would be sort of an Odessa, this would be a very Odessa-specific organization.
Right.
It's not that other communities don't have organizations that are addressing housing in a very meaningful way, working. And so, recruiting from those kinds of folks, you're going to find people who have the right kind of experience.
And I'm not saying that we need to create another bureaucracy. It just seems that there is a skill set here, a knowledge base.
I will say one thing that I want to emphasize that I don't really, I don't think it's really even emphasized in the written report. We're not talking about someone who is purely practiced in the ways of federal housing funds. This is another thing. This is working, if anything, working outside of that regime.
And all the recommendations that we provided and even all the examples that I gave are not self-evident.
But this is, this can't be just a paper organization that meets five times a year. This is a real thing that has staff, it has everyday operations, probably has a physical office, you know. I mean, it's a very real organization that plays a big role.
Let me thank everyone who's here. Thank you to our industry partners that I see back there and all the government officials. City council has a meeting at 5:00. I'm going to go ahead and turn the city councils. If y'all need to hang around and answer questions, but I think this is a call to action. And I think people are tired of all, people want action. And that's what we're, council, thank ODC for all of their hard work, which is simply now we got to work. So, thank you all and the council is very...